Did Allison give you the wrong chair again?
Call meeting in order. Pledge allegiance, Councilmember Clark.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Larky.
Here.
Councilmember White. Ryan. Councilmember Kraft.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Goff.
Here.
Councilmember Lawson.
Here.
And Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
You have a quorum.
No personal appearances, unfinished business. A. Motion approving the final reading of Bill 2023-31.
In ordinance approving the formalization of memorandum of understanding between the Belton School District and the city of Belton, Missouri.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Councilmembers Richardson.
Hold on, hold on.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Hearing none. Go ahead.
Uh, Councilmembers Richardson.
Here. Aye.
Powell.
Yes.
Ryan. Kraft.
Aye.
Goff.
Aye.
White. Lawson.
Aye.
Clark.
Aye.
Mayor Larky.
Upstain. Motion carries. New business. We're removing item A from the agenda and then we'll come back at a later date. We, uh...yeah, that's it. That's good enough. Item B. Motion approving the first reading of Bill 2023-33.
In ordinance accepting a Missouri Secretary of State Electronic Records Initiative grant.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Information?
Uh, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. In February 2023, the city clerk's office applied for an Electronic Records Initiative grant through the Missouri Secretary of State Office. This grant is specifically for the purpose of local record preservation in a digital format. The city was awarded $27,400 to be used towards an enterprise content management system and for three high-efficiency desktop scanners. This grant is a reimbursement and there is no cash match. Staff will publish an RFP for the ECM system as required by the grant and the city will need to agree to operate the system for a minimum of five years and will be responsible for ongoing system maintenance. The ECM system will allow staff to digitally archive city records. It will create a comprehensive approach to record-keeping by increasing secure citywide staff access, creating efficient document storage and retention through tracking.
Any questions? Go ahead.
Um, how are documents handled now? Are they all under Tate Stevens' water tower or are they...?
We have three paper locations that we secure records. And permanent records, like ordinances, council minutes, planning commission minutes, those are currently laser-fished and microfilmed and we keep the microfilm in two separate locations.
Okay.
But this grant will allow us to do more documents than just ordinances, minutes, budgets.
So is this scanner's gonna be big enough when people bring in plans for the planning commission and whatnot? Are they gonna be scanned?
These particular scanners will go up to legal size, so it won't do the large prints, but it will do standard.
So those will continue to be stored or do we trash those af...like if I ask you for the...the plans for Kohl's, could...could you find them?
Somewhere.
I'd probably have to defer to Matt, but yes.
Oh, okay. Good.
There's a good possibility that that's the most recent enough project that we would be able to find that.
Okay. Thank you.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
This is with a partial award. I mean, was there something more you were looking to do with...?
I was asking for another about $2,500, which was going to purchase three more scanners, but they decided that we only needed three instead of six.
So you only lost $2,500 bucks?
Yes.
Okay.
The most you can get is $30,000, so staff was very pleased receiving the $27,400.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. C. Motion approving the first reading of Bill 2023-34.
In ordinance approving the reappropriation and revision of the city of Belton fiscal year 2024 adopted city budget.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Hold on.
Hold on.
You can't...the si...the system's not set up for you to just do that. You would have to done that in personal appearances.
I wasn't informed of the rules for talking to the city council. Specifically what I'm here for is to...
No, you can't talk.
Hold on. Hold on. The way the system is set up, you can't...you can't do it this way. You...you have to do it the way the statutes state we have to do it.
But so are you telling me that the statutes are restricting the person in this room?
Yeah. Unfortunately, yes. City attorney can speak to that a little better.
The code of ordinances designates a specific time when the public is available to...or is allowed to utilize the limited public forum. That is, the city council's meeting under the code of ordinances. That portion is during the personal appearances item on the agenda and during other times the public is not, uh, a participant in the meeting. Instead, it is a meeting of the city council.
I...I will let you...inform you, let you know that this is just the first reading, so there will be a second reading at the next meeting in two or three weeks, whenever the next meeting is. You can sign up to talk then. Doing personal appearances, you need to reach out to the city clerk's office to do that and then she will put you on the agenda. That's the way we have to do it. So...you ready?
Um, well, the first question I have for you guys, um, did everybody receive the, um, new document, the updated document that's a little bit more descriptive of what we're...why we're amending the budget? Okay. So I did kinda wanna walk through that real quick with you guys. Um, I did split that up between expenditures and transfers. Um, on your...on the first page of that document, uh, there's a total of $10.9 million in expenditures and those are, uh, items that were either not purchased or projects that were not completed in 2023 that we are now moving over to 2024. Uh, the second page of the document that I sent you, uh, this morning is transfers. Um, as you know, we make transfers between funds and, um, we do have to amend those if we're changing any of those in the budget. And, uh, one of, I guess, the...the most notable ones is going from Public Safety Sales Tax Fund to General Fund, the items for fire and police that are being re-appropriated for '24. We do have to update that transfer in the budget, so that's one of the, um, ones that I would entertain any questions on, if anybody, yes.
Casey, I...just so that I understand it clearly, uh, what I'm looking at and what I'm reading, it says that we have $26 million not spent in '23 that...
Nope. Nope.
That's kinda the way I was reading it, so...
So the $26 million is the amended amount. So the portion on the first page that I sent you, the $10.9 million, that was what was not spent in '23. It's going to '24.
Okay.
The other $15.6 million, it's just transfers. But we...I do have to amend those line items for the budget. So that's just the total of the transfers going in and out of the funds.
So we're not really changing anything in the budget, just transferring it up to '24, right?
Correct. Yes.
If I...if I may, um, there...there is a, uh...what's included in here, this is all essentially carryforward from '23. That didn't get finished in '23 for an assortment of reasons, supply chain issues, things such as that. Things may...maybe we ordered and they hadn't come in yet and so we hadn't paid for it yet and so we did...most of this is ju...this is just all bookkeeping essentially to go from one fiscal year to the...to another fiscal year. Just we have to authorize it in '24 to pay for it in '24 because of the way...that's the way the state statutes are...set it up for us. Now, I would ask that the council consider adding one additional thing that was not on this list that we...we discussed today, uh, or just in the last 24 hours essentially. Um, and that would be the consideration of adding an additional $50,000 to animal control to...to change that part-time animal control position that we've had a heck of a time trying to fill and have had very few applicants and have not had any that have shaken out to the point where we can offer them the job to make that a full-time animal control officer. Um, we do have room in the budget for that. We just wanted to make sure that we did this in a public setting and let people know that what...that...that's what we intend to do. If you guys so choose to do so, it'd be the only addition to this that wasn't pre...budgeted either in '23 or in '24.
I would motion to amend the amendment to include the part-time animal control opening to be full-time.
We have a motion to amend. The motion on the floor.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to amend. The motion on the floor. Any discussion on the motion to amend?
I would, Mayor, if you don't mind.
Go ahead.
Um, I would like to point out that at...that there's a lot of...been a lot of public chatter about our ability to respond to animal control issues. Especially if you go on social media, that's probably one of the...one of the largest complaint, um, areas that... and I don't think that it's an unfounded complaint area. I think that...that we have one full-time animal control officer. They're limited to the number of hours that they work. If they're on vacation or whatnot, then police is supposed to respond, but police is not necessarily one, trained to respond to all of those types of calls and they can't handle all those calls in the same manner that an animal control officer would be able to and would be trained to handle those calls. And so it's...and so there's a lot of time, um, where there...there is not an animal control officer on duty. You know, there's...there are more than 40 hours in a week. And so this would double our coverage essentially and the intention would be that we would find a way to schedule this so we have more coverage and not have them on at the same time. So, um, essentially doubling our...our coverage of animal control issues. That's...that's what the intention behind this would be if we so choose to move forward.
So what...what was in the budget for the assistant or the part-time animal control? So...
About $20,000, I believe.
So we're going from 20 to 70 or we doing 20 to 50?
Well, the...it's the s...the salary and then the reason we're asking for 50 com...extra, it'd be go...it'd go to 70 is to cover the benefits and the extra expenses that we would have to cover, workers' comp, that kinda stuff, that kinda thing that comes with having a full-time employee that we wouldn't have to pay for if they were a part-time employee.
I just wanted to make sure that we're going from 20 to 70 or 20 to 50 and make sure that...
The salary would be in line with the...with the existing animal control officer as far as where it would... where it would set up on the grade and the...and whatnot, on the pay grade in our...in our current pay structure. Um, but the extra money would be avail...would be there to cover the extra costs to the city for...for the, uh, for retirement and everything else that goes into it.
Anybody else? Go ahead.
Um, I know that if...if we don't have a s...a second animal control and we have to contract that out through like another city from what I under here understand, that's gonna...that's a cost too, isn't it?
Yeah, and we don't...we don't really do that at this point. We have our...
Okay.
Police try to respond to those calls and handle them the best that they can. Um, uh, we're not the only city that has...that struggles with animal control issues as it is, so we would...we would struggle to find another city that would be able to cover us essentially unless it was essentially an emergency situation.
My, uh, my thought on this would be that what city manager just said is that we have to rely on the police officers to go do it, then that takes them away. Real job. So that's...I would...I would support...
That's the other issue. If they're on calls and...and there's a chance it may be hard to get to those calls.
I would support this. Rob?
Yeah, um, Casey and I discussed this a little bit this afternoon. Uh, there's a $1.8 million transfer, uh, to the water fund, uh, from the water impact fee and yet she said that not all of the items listed under expenditures that are gonna happen in 2023, '24 are covered by that. Some are covered by other funds or whatever. So, um, where does the other money that's being transferred over...?
Hold...let me...let me stop you there because...because technically I think we're still talking about the motion to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I just thought about that. Not...not that I wanna stop you. I just...I just wanna make it cleaner. So any other information or talk about the motion to amend?
I was just gonna piggyback on your point that it takes PD away from their actual job, but they also don't have the same equipment or maybe experience with animals, so it becomes a safety issue as well.
And the good thing is we were already planning to outfit a second animal...part-time animal control officer anyway with the budget, so that...so that would...that would roll into that full-time role already. So, um, it's...it's essentially just the human component of that extension to a full-time position that we would have to cover. That's different.
Okay. Anybody else on the motion to amend? Hearing none. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. So now we're back to the motion as amended on the floor. So go ahead, Councilman Powell.
Well, again, um, there's...what...money came over from the Water Impact Fund to the Water Fund and I guess some to the wastewater fund and I'm...and yet, uh, we weren't discussing with Casey. We weren't clear which of those items that were in her email today are covered by that, uh, but it doesn't sound like everything's covered by that. So it sounds like we're gonna have extra money in the Water Fund that came over from the Impact Fund and my guess, my question is, where does that money go to? Is it just a...to...is that something we just like a can? We keep kicking down the road for, uh, emergencies or...?
Well, that...you can, if you wanna say something, Greg.
The money is being transferred from the Water Impact Fee to the Waterline Fund.
Uh-huh.
That is paying the current contracts that we have in the northeast area to build those water lines. That's where that money's going.
Okay, so that is not listed on these...on her...
No, cuz it's...that's already a contract that we have.
Something separate. Okay. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you.
Anybody else on the motion as amended?
Just wanna point out one more time. This is an ordinance, so it will require a second reading and we could...that would give everybody two weeks to...to digest further. The public can have two weeks to dive into it if they so choose before the sec...the second reading and...and, uh, I just wanted to make sure we...everybody was aware of that.
Angela, you got anything?
I'm good.
Okay. All right. Hearing none else. All in favor of the motion as amended?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Item D. Motion approving resolution R. 2023-68.
A resolution approving a professional services agreement with Confluence Inc. to complete the 2024 comprehensive plan.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
Yep. Thank you, Mayor and Council. Um, before you this evening is a professional services agreement with Confluence to complete the 2024 conference of plan update. Um, an RFP was issued on April 12th of this year and submittal deadline was May 5th. Um, we received four proposals and the, uh, review committee interviewed all four teams that submitted proposals and selected Confluence based on their proposal and their qualifications of their team. Um, the budget includes $2,000...$200,000 for the conference of plan update as part of the CIP and the total fee and the scope of work with this is $198,500. Um, again, the conference of plan will guide future development over the next 15 to 20 years in the city and staff recommends approval of this agreement with Confluence to complete that update.
Any questions? Go ahead.
How often do we normally get this done and if we haven't, what kinda time span are you supposed to do it in?
Um, so the standard is typically every 15 to 20 years. We have gone 31 years without this update, so it's...it's desperately needed.
I found a, uh, copy of the '92 plan and, uh, and it cost $13,000. So, uh, we gotta buy order mag...an extra zero, or two, or one, whatever.
I might add that I...that comprehensive plans have come a long way in the last 31 years and so I think that the scope of services we will receive for this is a little different in size and...and quality than what we might have received in 1992.
According to their report, it took them 15 months. Uh, maybe we can do it faster. Maybe that's what we're paying for.
This is roughly a...a 12-month process.
So I guess, can you walk us through, like, is this gonna be set up where the community is gonna be asked or invited to meetings where they can put input and all that?
Yeah, there will be, uh, significant opportunities for public engagement throughout the process, um, both online as well as through multiple public meetings and different events that they will hold. There will be a statistically valid survey that will go out, um, later this summer. Um, so probably starting in August, going through October, November, there will be a good two or three months there of multiple opportunities for community engagement.
Go ahead, Angela.
I was just gonna compliment the plan. I loved how much community involvement there was in the plan that's in our packet. That is absolutely spelled out to make sure it's catching even those types of citizens that don't always get involved, getting some of them involved as well. So that way hopefully we're not gonna, you know, have the issues of people being like, "Well, I wasn't invited." You know, it's gonna encompass so many different areas that I think it's gonna get a little bit of everyone. So I...I think it looks like a really great plan.
Anybody else? Hearing none. Oh.
Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to...to Angela's point, um, and you were on that committee when we were choosing, um, who we were gonna try to propose for this comprehensive plan. One of the reasons that Confluence was picked is we really did like their public engagement component and what they proposed to do with that. Um, we thought that was an extremely important, uh, component of the...of the comprehensive plan process and...and they were...they went above and beyond even not...even my expectations on that.
Go ahead.
Will this plan talk about, um, annexation or anything or talk about we should look at? Or is that...I mean, is that part of that?
Yes, it'll talk about future land use maps, um, how that will, you know, what future growth patterns, um, how the...the city is zoned and set out essentially, you know, you know, where we want residential growth and that kinda thing. Um, so yes, it'll...it'll...that is a component of...
Man, I'm gonna probably say we probably haven't tried to annex any land in probably 25 years. But I think as we grow, I mean, I know the county, if anybody's trying to like build around a community, they're gonna force them to join a community to make sure they have their water and sewer capabilities and all that stuff, so...okay.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. E. Motion approving resolution R. 23-69.
A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a quitclaim deed on behalf of the city of Belton, Missouri in favor of Earl and Tamra Lancore.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
So this is a interesting situation that, um...
To say the least.
So the previous...
We're in a pickle.
Yeah, we're kinda in a pickle here. So, uh, the previous owner at 7215 East 157th Street, uh, was a pickleball player. Apparently he was a very good pickleball player. And, uh, in order to help him practice and do his thing, he built a pickleball court adjacent to his property, which happened to be, uh, city property, which is kinda floodplain area for Oil Creek. Uh, the area is at the end of a cul-de-sac which cannot be built on. It's a...it would've been a lot they could... it's unbuildable, so it's city property. So he went and built this on there without us ever knowing anything about it. Uh, but then he sold the house and moved away and now there's a new owner to that property. Once he found this pickleball court, we realized that we don't wanna own and operate it, maintain it, insure it and run this, uh, facility. And so the decision was made to try to, um, uh, give this pickleball court to the adjacent property owner, which, uh, originally built it. And so, uh, we went and had it surveyed, came out with a quitclaim deed and now, uh, are asking for things to Patrick writing this up, uh, to, uh, transfer this pickleball court to, uh, that property owner so it'll be part of their property and would no longer be a responsibility or liability for the city. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions?
Or any cost in...involved, Greg?
It did cost us some money to survey it out and prepare the documents.
So was the...was the people gonna cover that or...that's getting it?
We did not work out an arrangement for them to cover that. Where there was...there was some preliminary discussion that maybe if it cost, you know, about a thousand bucks or so that they would try to cover it, but I believe it cost us closer to four or 5,000 bucks for the survey and so it was pretty...getting pretty high. That said, I think that...that it would pay for itself if we don't have to worry about any insurance claims on that property in the future, um, from someone going and playing on the pickleball court or, you know, if we were to have to demo it, it would cost us at least that, if not more. So I mean, I think we're comfortable with us taking that as a sunk cost.
We just talked about it in the beginning. I know...
Yeah.
And then so I didn't see anything about it, so I didn't know what happened there.
At this point, I think it's a sunk cost. The idea is that we just wanna make sure that it...that it... we think it could be a good thing for the neighborhood. We just don't wanna have to own it and take liability for it. And so if he wants to keep it and...and insure it and take that...take that risk essentially and allow the community to play on it, then that's...that's up to the property owner.
Super. Anybody else?
Go ahead.
Uh, this seems a little weird to me, like you said, and I don't have anything against the Lancores or you or the city, but it...let's say the guy accro...I went and looked at this today. Say a guy across the street keeps hearing pong, pong, pong every day, every night at 11 o'clock and he goes over and says, "Uh, hey, wait a second. Can you stop this?" He says, "Oh, no, this is my court. I can do whatever I want and by the way, Belton gave it to me." I mean, did we offer it to other neighbors? Did we...did we...did it go through the planning commission? Did we look into sidewalks that are required for, uh, things like this? Did we look at the distance from the street? Did we notify the neighbors this was going in? Seems to me like, uh, I can now go out and find a city property and start building on it and maybe you'll give it to me. I...it...it just seems back...back asswards to me, but man, I'm just... It's been there for about five years, so the neighbors have probably been hearing that ping, ping, ping for a long time. Well, what if I move in tomorrow? I mean, I don't know.
There are noi...it's funny you ask that cuz we actually have a work session scheduled for today to discuss the noise ordinances and, um, the city's role in that and so there are ordinances in place to address that.
We didn't do any other thing. We didn't do any other...we didn't hold them to any other ordinances we would have if these people had come to us and said, "We wanna build this here" and it actually was their property and it was right on the street. We...we would've had certain ordinances that would apply, uh, and now they're...by going around us, they didn't have to...they didn't have to meet any ordinances. Well, but I think the Lancores are just like the city of Belton. They're the innocent party in this. Well, yeah, they're innocent. This thing is just built next to their house and they bought this house.
Take it or not, it's not the person that built it. It's somebody else.
Oh, I know. I know. I... Well, I can tell you that I know that property and who built it and my son lived right across the road from him, just moved a few years ago. That's a dead-end road with a creek and trees on the end of it there. Uh, the closest house would've been the one my son lived in, which is probably a hundred yards away from there at least and it's in a...it's in a very desolate area, so, um, it's...it's not gonna be a... Well, I don't know. The people...I could see the houses on Richmond from there. I mean, I could see that guy's backyard. There's a...there's a thin line of trees between him and the court. And...and my thing isn't about noise. It's more about...that was just an example. My...it's more about, uh... And I don't know what other solution there is, but there's more...it's more about us not following the rules to get this done. I mean, somebody's getting something free from the city and it's...it's not their fault. It's not the...maybe it's not the city's fault either, but...
I would say the only other option would've been the city to spend more money to tear it out.
It's a very nice pickleball court.
I mean, it wasn't...it would've taken a little bit of time and effort to tear it out.
And finally, did, like I said, did we offer it to any other...since...since it did not belong to either the builder or the new, uh, resident, did we offer it to other neighbors? Did they offer it to your son? Did they offer it to the guy on Richmond?
Believe we looked in and there's no homeowners association.
There's no HOA, so essentially the...the options that we had were one, go to the neighboring property owner cuz it literally abuts their property and...and I mean, if you didn't know that it was on city property, you would've thought that it was in their backyard.
I...I understand.
And so it...so that make...I mean, you...obviously you saw it. So it...to...to staff, it made the most sense that we would start there. If they didn't want it, then we would go to the community as a whole and say, "Look, if you guys want this organized some way and we'll find a way to deed it over to you." And if that failed, then we would just tear it out. And so those were the options we felt we were...we were stuck with once it was in and in place. Um, granted, you're right, the process stinks. The process was not the normal process for something like this and it's definitely not the way the city would endorse going about this. And if the city had caught it in...and at any point in its construction or early existence, that there...with the exit...with the, uh, property owner that actually built it adjacent, it probably would've been a different outcome, but at...at this point, it was one of those situations where we thought it was a sunk...it was, okay, what's the best-case scenario out of a...of a...out of a hairy situation? And...and our first thought was, let's try the adjoining property owner and that's where we found a...a willing taker.
I guess my question is not on this property per se, but probably what Councilmember...
Powell is talking about. How do we go around the city and check to make sure people aren't building on easements like this all the time? I mean, it's a dead-end street. Unless we're working on that creek back there, we would've never known this. And I don't know how we found this out in the first place, but.
That, yeah, that's, that's the, it's the crazy thing about this is, is generally, you know, we'll see something because we'll go somewhere and we'll, you know, and, there's usually something like this doesn't just spring up in the city limits, essentially is what I'm trying to say, because someone will notice it. But like you said, it's in such a remote, remote part of the city that doesn't get any traffic, and there's, there's no traffic going down that street essentially to that, past that, that house, because there's a dead end that you can see coming. And so.
Five cars a day.
Well, just like you said, I mean, if the neighbors across the street or next door saw him pouring concrete, they think that's his side yard.
Probably.
I mean, looks like his side yard.
Yep. And it's been there for a number of years.
He probably has maintained that side yard for years too.
And I, and I will say this, if, if there was any neighborhood pushback, that would've been a different scenario as well. And so, and it's been there for a few years. There's a, there's a neighborhood across the creek essentially with housing. There's, there's four or five houses within, you know, 250 yards of this thing. And yeah, we've had zero complaints over time, so that, that kinda made it a little bit more of a, amenable.
Well, I went and talked to this couple when we mailed out letters and they weren't returning our phone calls, so I wouldn't physically talk to them about this, tell them to get in touch with Joe and, and what we're trying to do. And they informed me at that time that it is a neighborhood court and people from other houses come down and play there all the time, even when they're not home. So they do allow outside people in the neighborhood to come down and use that court. And that's what the previous owner did also. So it's been more of a neighborhood pickleball court than the personal pickleball court. Court into them.
Yeah.
Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carries. F, motion approving resolution R 2023-70.
Resolution dedicating marijuana sales tax revenues to economic development.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
All right, counsel and Mr. Mayor, this is essentially an extension of the conversation we started during our work session about, you know, we, we have this dedic, or this extra 3% sales tax on recreational marijuana. We don't yet know how much the money that's gonna be generating, but at the same time, we don't think it should, it should just be sitting in the general fund for general uses. Not that that's not a good place to put, to put money, but we just thought that, that if we could be more intentional with this, economic development seemed like a good place to put it. It's a, it's a, it's a nice wide net. We could do things such as infrastructure, tourism, things like that. And so it just seemed to make sense as a good place until at least we know how much revenue we're talking. And if we get to a point where we know how much revenue it is, and it's an, it's an extremely substantial amount, maybe we decide to move it somewhere specifically that's different than this. But, or maybe it stays here and we, we put it towards sidewalks or, or whatever that might be. And so that's why we're asking that we just put it in economic development for now, allow that to, to go into that fund for the next six or eight months until we have a, a good idea of, of what those revenues are gonna be on a consistent basis. Then we can come back to you with, with more, with a follow-up on that.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I, I understand where you're coming from, but I have some concerns about that, especially now that we don't have any staff in our economic development department. I'd rather see those six months of collecting the sales tax revenue, a plan put in place to put in the sidewalks. And if it's still under the umbrella of economic development, that's great, but that is a more concrete thing that residents want, right? Than, we put this on the ballot to say, "Let's see what residents want." It was the April municipal election. They said, "Yes, fine." We don't know how much money this is. We don't have staff. And we gave them economic development, them, that's nobody right now, but we gave economic development a significant amount in last year's budget, a seed money for projects, and we should see that bear fruit before we throw more money into it. So I, I'm a no on this, but if there was a plan for sidewalks, I wanted to do the concrete pun again, I'd be more excited about it.
Go ahead.
I don't mind putting in economic development. First of all, I have no clue what it's gonna be. And if you wanna put in a sidewalks, if it's $40,000, you're not getting a lot of sidewalks when you talk about the city doing the work. So until we actually know what that dollar figure's gonna be, and there's a lot of stuff that we can do in economic development that we just can't do if we put it in other funds. So, I mean, again, as a city council, we can always do a budget amendment and move it. So no matter where we park it, but I think there's a lot of stuff that we can do in economic development, and there's a lot of stuff that we're working on that we're gonna need money hopefully in the future for. So putting that money there seems prudent right now.
I will say that the seed money we put in for the economic development is, is being utilized right now. There's a lot of real estate discussions and things that have taken place recently in, in executive session that at some point when things are finalized will be, will be made public. So it's not, it's not going toward nothing. It's not just sitting there. And just because we don't have a permanent economic development staff yet, doesn't mean we're not still doing economic development.
Well, and hopefully we hire one soon.
All right, well, but I think what, what we just discussed a minute ago with Matt, I mean, we've got a comprehensive plan. I mean, if something comes out of that that generates us interest and we got seed money to go forward with the plan, or, or, you gotta have money sometimes to put a plan together, and, and that's gonna help.
Go ahead, Angela.
I think I'm still confused as to what the benefit would be for us to move it to economic development, when it seems like we're saying we still wouldn't really have a purpose for it. We're just moving it from one fund to a different fund in case we needed it? Is there something that could come up that if it were still in general fund, that we couldn't use it for economic development?
General fund is a broader fund. That's the, and it does have, it does encompass just about anything. I mean, if you guys wanna keep it there, we, we are, it covers just about everything, so. It's a possibility.
Well, I mean, I'm gonna go back to what I said a minute ago. I mean, I tell you know how much money it is. I mean, what's it really, I mean, move it into economic development? If you're too much money for over there, then we can divide it and put it somewhere else.
But why if there's not a reason?
I think the problem you get into, I mean, during the election cycle, if you listen to people, well, they didn't put it anywhere. They didn't, they didn't tell us where they're spinning it.
Yeah, dumped it in the general fund and went on.
Yeah, I mean, so now we're telling them where we're gonna spend it.
That would be a reason for us to have changed it before, but not now.
Say it again.
So that would've been a reason for us to change it before the election, but not a reason for changing it now, because we've already gotten it approved.
I think there's always a reason for us to, to be responsive to what we feel like the, the citizens are telling us. So I, I mean, I see, I see both sides of this, and I think the intention for, behind, putting it behind economic development is there are some specific things that we would have to transfer money from the general fund to economic development to do if, if there's not money in there. For instance, if redevelopment, land acquisition, those types of things, that it, it could be useful to have this in there, or if we wanted to do a sidewalk project. I mean, we could fit that under economic development as well as anything else, so.
Well, but I think what we just, just discussed tonight with the budget amendments we're doing, we're just getting rid of all that. I mean, our new finance director wants to get rid of all these transfers that we keep doing, and this is one of the ways to quit doing all that. It's going, we're earmarking this money automatically instead of transferring it. I mean, if we wanna earmark the, the money a year from now, we can earmark it differently.
We've just had, oh, sorry.
Go ahead, no, go ahead.
I mean, we, what I'm asking for, I think, is a more like concrete commitment to sidewalks. I'm not trying to do that. Thank you, Rob. I, you pointed out that we have an opportunity to be responsive to resident desires here. We've all heard that people want more sidewalks. And if I recall, we had some projections and it was more than $40,000. Like, I, I have a number in my mind. It was gonna be in the ballpark of a couple hundred thousand dollars, and that's.
Potentially, but that, that, yes, that was the numbers that were given by the lobbyists when they were pushing this amendment, was that the average would be about $200,000 per store.
I mean, if you had a Martin City one, yeah. But if you, I mean, I don't know what these, we don't have any reports of what these three that we have right now are doing as far as income. How much of it is medicinal and how much is it recreational? Because it's different.
Well, sure. So just having projections to go off of and a need, let's match that up. I mean, I, I think you threw out $40,000 to kinda downplay the impact it could have. And I disagree. And I think delivering sidewalks in any measure is delivering what residents want, and this is an opportunity to do it. I mean.
We are, we are working on a comprehensive sidewalks plan and study essentially. We're doing internally, okay? We are, we are mapping out where we need sidewalks, where sidewalks are, are not up to snuff, that we do have existing sidewalks. And then we, we have some potential ideas on where we can identify funding sources for those sidewalks. And so that is coming. We're just, we're just not there yet, because we don't wanna halfway roll out the plan when we don't have everything completely surveyed and we're not ready for that yet, if that makes any sense, so.
That's fine. I don't wanna be a broken record, but I just wanna be direct about that.
Go ahead.
Mayor, we're, we're dealing with an unknown right now, number. And what Joe's just proposing is just somewhere to park it. And you'll come back to this council with that amount and.
Right.
And decisions could be made.
Of course.
Rather than the sidewalk, or.
I just think the, the community will never be sorry for investing in economic development, is my point. And so rather than going toward general services where you don't, where it gets lost in the mix with all the other money, I mean, I think that being, being very intentional about investing in economic development will never be a place where the city is, is sorry to, to put the money. I'm, I'm just, I know, because it leads to future growth, it leads to future quality of life components. And so that's, it just, to me, it, it shows us that we're at least being intentional to the point where we're not just letting it sit there among everything else, our general services, which are great services, by the way, but that we're, we're being intentional about actually doing something specific with this money.
Go ahead.
My only other issue is, is does police have enough stuff for the, with the marijuana out there? Do they need more equipment? Do they need more training for things that are gonna rise by legalizing marijuana? That was my only other issue, so making sure they're covered.
We haven't identified anything yet, as of yet, that, that would require any extra policing, so to speak, because of the effects of the recreational. Not that that, you know, we won't, we won't be watching for that in the future.
Well, I've got the dates a little confused, but the, I think that the, when we did the survey for recycling, there was a part of that report that was the top five, and one of the top fives was sidewalks. And I don't think economic development was on it. So I would agree with Councilman Lawson that that's something specific we can do. And I guess my overall question is, it seems like every time we're here, and that's the good news, according to Perry, we're talking about surpluses instead of negative numbers. So at what point do we have, this is an offshoot, but at what point do we start thinking about giving some relief to the property owners? I mean, how, is there a state requirement that your budget can't be 50% over what you spend or something like that, or is there?
Well, there'll be a rollback this year because the assessed valuation went up, so our, our levy will go down based on Missouri law. It does it every year.
What does every year?
The levy, the levy gets adjusted every year based off the assessed valuation.
Yes.
Okay, but my, my property tax went up. I don't know.
As Councilmember Clark stated, the Missouri Hancock Amendment requires the city council to roll back its tax levy to ensure that its revenues from existing non-new construction are this, are the same plus inflation from the last year.
Okay, so we can't have a big slush fund, that's what you're saying?
No, absolutely not. That's, and for all members of.
Not from property taxes, anyway.
For all members of the public, when your assessed value goes up, under Missouri law, all the political subdivisions have to roll back their tax levy. There's only one political subdivision in the state of Missouri that is exempt from that, and that's the Kansas, Kansas City, Missouri School District, but everybody else has to.
Okay.
Anybody else? I mean, I, I hear everybody, and my thoughts are that by putting it in the economic development fund, that we, it's more transparent of what money we're collecting and where it's going. And there's no reason that we can't do sidewalks with this money at any time we so choose. So I, I'm okay with this, as long as we plan on looking at it in six months, a year, and figuring out how much we're getting, and then make a plan. And maybe that sidewalk plan will be back by the time that six months is done. So that's my thoughts. Anybody else? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. G, motion approving resolution R 23, R 2023-71.
A resolution approving change order number two with Superior Bowen Asphalt Company, LLC for the FY '23 street preservation program in the amount of $1,642,844.98.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Go ahead.
So if you remember last year, the voters voted for more bond divisions to reconstruct our streets. And so we issued bonds for like nine and a half million dollars. We then went, issued contracts for the fall, which actually only was a little bit less than $7 million. And so we built, we paved roads last fall, and then we're finishing up the spring. We still had capacity to do some more streets. And so we looked at the list that was from this year's list, the '23 list, and the streets around Hargis Lake were on it. And as we did construction in that area, we really tore up a lot of those streets. You probably saw how bad condition they're in. So what we did is we went through and we added the streets that we tore up around Hargis Lake. So as we finished that project, and there's new water lines, new sewer lines, we also went through and replaced the curbs and did the pavement that was scheduled to be done this fall. We just went and did it in the spring under this year's contract. And so it was work we added on, is what this is. This isn't like spending more on the streets that we had. We added more streets, and that's how come we're adding more to the contract.
Any questions? Go ahead.
So this, I think, I've, I've been over there. The street's really beautiful. So we've finished this work yet, right?
Correct.
Okay. But now we're just asking for us to approve paying for it, right?
Correct.
So why does this work this way and our 353 plan works just the opposite? I mean, I guess the state requires that you have to have approval before you even start something. But here, we've already finished it and we're just asking for more money. I, I mean, I think it's an excellent, I mean, it's, it's a great street. It's a great, sidewalks are good. I like the drainage ditch and everything. Probably not supposed to call it that, but anyway, but I'm, I, I just, we've had a few projects that have been turned down, at least in my neighborhood, because they didn't, they'd already started, or one of them even completed. And yet, for the 353, and yet the city itself is finishing all, the whole projects and then going and getting the funding. So I, I mean, it's a philosophical thing. I don't, it seems back asswards to me.
Council adopted the Chapter 353 plan. They explicitly included a provision in there that only projects that were under construction at the time of the adoption of the Chapter 353 plan could be included, and then anybody else you needed to come in prior to beginning the construction.
I, I think it's more restricted than that. It can't even be started.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, so, it's not, not, it's not that it's incomplete, it's that it's not even started.
Yeah, and that, that was the decision of the city council. Again, if that is a decision of the city council, so that is something that you could change.
So that's not a state thing?
No, but again, when you utilize incentives, most people want the incentives approved prior to beginning the construction, because then you don't know what your budget is.
Incentives are, are essentially saying you're not gonna be ta, or you're gonna get a rebate or whatever for taxes, right?
Right.
So because of that, the importance behind that is, is the, is the impetus for us not, not letting staff make that decision essentially.
No, I, no, I think the, the way that we do it is fair, except, I mean, me, I'm, I don't know, making a mountain out of a molehill, but I, I, at least in, in a couple of cases in my neighborhood, people were, or at least one, I remember really well, people were turned down because they'd already started their project. In one case, they'd even finished it. And here, the city, though, has finished a project and just now asking for the money. So I'm just kinda pointing out that looks a little weird to people watching this on TV.
It was, it was essentially a project that was already approved. There just, there was additional scope and, and that was essentially part of, that was added to this. So it's not like this new project was started and then completed. That, you know, essentially it was about meeting the demand that was needed and in an area that was already being under construction for other reasons. And then also, it was part of our plan down the line, now for next year anyway, that money that we were already budgeting for, was already part of the streets plan, that was part of the bond project, you know what I'm saying? So it's just moving this project essentially, this part of the project up a year allowed us to be more responsive to the, to the, to the residents that were already being inconvenienced because of the other work that was being done in the area.
Okay, okay. I, I understand that.
Go ahead, Angela.
I, I was just going to say, I, I do see what Rob is saying with this, that it almost seems like maybe we should relook into that three fifty-three program as to when people are allowed to apply. I totally understand that we want any projects to be done during the scope, you know, we don't want someone, you know, who did work 20 years ago to, you know, turn in something and be like, well, I did this work 20 years ago, I get that. But for people who have done that during the scope, it, it might be worth us looking back into that, um, program to kind of see if maybe that is something we'd like to change.
Go ahead.
I, I don't want to get in the weeds, because I think this is an apples to oranges comparison, but since I'm on the chapter three fifty-three board, I disagree with that. The previous council, prior to us getting voted in, set up how that was going to work and whether things could be started already, or if they need to get preapproval, and now we're in the phase where everybody is getting preapproval. And I think that I, we shouldn't change that, is my view, but to the point we're talking about here, this, this is an apples to oranges comparison, we're a change order for city work to the chapter three fifty-three.
And I think the three fifty-three was designed to, to stimulate people to do work instead of work that people have already done. It was the main focus why they chose to go that way.
Oh, sorry, I was just.
I was just going to say it's about beautification of downtown is what three fifty-three is, it's incentivizing people to fix up their homes, to make them more valuable in the future.
And to city staff's credit, they've done a really good job on outreach and marketing to get folks bought into the program, and we've had over a dozen, um, projects through there, following the rules, working with staff. That's what we actually want to see, and we have been seeing that.
Go ahead, Angela.
Some of the product, projects were done because city staff did encourage people to do them, but they didn't realize enough to tell them the paperwork had to be done first. So that's where this part is coming from. I've heard from a couple of people, like Rob has, and full disclosure, one of them is my parents. Which of course, I would recuse myself from any of that vote, but there are other citizens I've heard from too, that had said they had already started something and were told no, because they already started it. Someone was siding, I believe, that they had already started a siding job, they hadn't finished it, and wanted to see about that and was told no as well.
All right.
Over the paperwork.
All this communication debate is good, but I think we need to move that, this situation to something other than what the motion is on the floor.
Well, I mean, my, my thing was.
Talk about this later, but go ahead, one more.
I mean, a change order is when you dig up a road and you find out the base sucks, and you need to replace the base. I mean, I know it happened over there on one of my streets, like Oakland or Richmond, I mean, we had to dig all the way back down a dirt and, and put down a brand new base, we didn't know that going into it. So a change order is saying, hey, we found some stuff that we got to spend more money on to make sure that we do this road correctly. And I'd rather them do the road correctly than in two years got to come back and redo the road because we didn't do it correctly. That's what a change order is, it's not coming back afterwards and asking for more money because they, they wanted it, it's because they, the scope of the job changed. And I think that's the difference where we got to look at here is, is we require them to do more than what we originally asked them to do.
All right, back to the motion on the floor. Any other debate or discussion about the motion on the floor?
Well, I, to, to respond to, uh, Councilman Clark, I, that's the way I think it should work, I, I just, I had heard that this was, uh, something that, or maybe I read it in this, uh, presentation by Greg, a written presentation. That, uh, we were already there, so let's fix the roads. I didn't think it was a, it, it was something where we, where we dug something up and said, oh my gosh, we got to spend too many more dollars.
Well, I, I think it was when they did the water line, sewer lines, they realized how bad the roads were after they dug them all up, is, is what I think Greg was saying, and might correct me if I'm wrong.
You're correct. When we did the work around the area, we did beat up the roads really badly, far worse than we ever thought we would. So the intent was to do it in the fall, but we had the capacity, the ability to do it right then, so we just did it to finish the project.
I mean, if this were, if we're talking about Westover, and it wasn't supposed to be done until the fall, I mean, if you never drove down Westover after they destroyed it.
Oh, yeah.
I mean, if you lived over there, if you're a council person for that ward, you'd want Westover redone.
Well, and, and the rationale again behind going ahead and, and pushing forward with the change order is you've already got mobilization in the area, you've already got the contract there in place. So you're, you, you don't have to, you don't have to pay for that to happen again, and because the, you know, it was already in our plan to begin with, we already had the money sitting there that had been budgeted. We just, it was just budgeted for something else at that point in time. So we just, we thought, okay, let's save the taxpayers a little bit of money on the mobilization costs, get this done now, since we're already here. And yes, it's a big number, and so that, there's a little bit of a shock value, I get that, but again, it's about trying to be most efficient with our, with our taxpayer funds in the long run.
I complain about the same thing with about Allen Street also, I mean, we've dug up Allen Street forty-two times in the last three years. And I asked if it's on the street map, and it's not, and it should be on a street map. If you live on Allen Street, and if you haven't driven Allen Street, you need to go drive it because we've, we've torn it up so many times, it needs a new street. I mean, it's no different than what happened with Westover.
Call for the question.
We have a motion to call for the question, is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to call for the question. All in favor for calling for the question?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. All in favor of approving motion, resolution twenty-two-three dash seventy-one?
Aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. Consent agenda, one motion, non-debatable to approve the recommendations noted, any member of the council may ask for an item to be taken from the consent agenda for discussion in separate action.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Communication from city council, go ahead.
Um, I just want to say we got the Fourth of July event coming up Friday and Saturday, so Saturday, Friday starts at five, and Saturday, I think the parade starts at ten, lining up at nine. So it's going to be all day Saturday, everybody show up if you can.
Go ahead.
Okay, uh, for parks, just a reminder that fall sports signups are going on now, and then a little bit of praise, the last car show, there's over a hundred cars there, it's a really great turnout considering it was a little hot. Uh, and the farmer's market is, is carrying on even with sharing the parking lot with the Fourth of July fireworks tent, so, uh, be sure to get out in there and support those vendors.
Go ahead, Perry. Dave?
I got none.
Oh, yeah, um, last week was the TD Transportation Development District meeting. Uh, anyway, uh, the bonds were, uh, we passed to go and get bonds for fourteen point six million. The project's seven point six million, and the, uh, rest of the money will be used to pay out, pay off outstanding bonds. And, uh, Greg can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think utilities that they're doing right, that they're moving right now should be moved by the end of July. And I just want to follow up on what, uh, Dave was saying. So the que, my question is, will Allen Avenue eventually be paved? Cause there's, I drove it down today, and it's, uh, like you suggested, and I, and it's, it's kind of bumpy. I mean, they, they use concrete instead of asphalt to cover over the, the waterline stuff.
The answer to that question is a lot more complicated than yes or no.
Okay.
So Allen actually needs more than just an overlay. Allen is one of the streets that residents have repeatedly asked for sidewalks. It needs curbs, it needs storm sewers, it needs a lot of improvement. And so part of our sidewalk plan coming forward, that's going to be, uh, we're looking at citywide, is going to be looking at the cost to improve streets and adding sidewalks. That actually will improve streets to get sidewalks on them. So as we're looking at that, we're trying to figure out what is the overall plan for the city of how do we go about achieving our long-term goal? Not just paving it and then two years later digging it up again, so that's why we're looking at that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, I don't know if he's. Uh, yeah, one sec.
Okay, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead.
Follow-up question, and, uh, my apologies to, uh, the two Ward One members, but this is maybe a Ward One issue. But, uh, I noticed that as you go down, um, if you go east on Hundred Fifty-Fifth, uh, there's signs starting at, uh.
It's already been addressed many a times.
Vici for no truck train.
No street, no sign going on white?
No sign on white, no, none on starlight, none on, uh.
Well, starlight's a dead end, but typically a GPS not going to tell them to turn on a dead end, but white is not a dead end, so I've asked that many a times. And I told Joe this morning, it wasn't there.
So what was the answer?
We're just waiting for Public Works to put it out.
Oh, okay, great, great, okay.
It's been addressed many a times in the last two months.
Okay, good.
Anybody else?
I mean, my question, I guess, going back to street preservations and sidewalks. As a council person, I hope that we look at what I call arterial or streets that go through that people are using as drag strips, like a VC or an Allen, that are going from one major road to another major road. And, and looking at them first more than, um, streets maybe here in Old Town that aren't, um, going straight through. That's what I would probably look at, is making sure that we're looking at like VC and Allen streets that are people cutting through all the time. And don't have width.
Go ahead.
I would be remiss if I wouldn't argue that we should prioritize any streets around the schools that don't have connecting sidewalks on the same side.
They're usually on arterial streets too.
I'm just saying, uh, seven of the nine schools are in Ward Three, and there are a lot of gaps in areas where, and by the way, the buses, if you're within a mile, you have to walk, and there are gaps within a mile. So that, if we're taking requests, that's what I've got.
Got it. Angela, go ahead.
Mine isn't on sidewalks, it was just a bit of praise. I did have a citizen contact me about the new council action reports, and just wanted me to relay to everyone how wonderful and amazing they are for our citizens. Cause it really puts everything in a, you know, compact little, this is what you really need to know about this. Um, that way they don't have to read through all, you know, a hundred some odd pages of everything, so our citizens are really appreciating those action reports, thank you.
Good.
Sorry, can I add on the praise train?
No, you're fine, go ahead.
Okay, um, I also got some feedback that the town halls were really well received, and maybe we could look at getting some sort of repetitive cycle with those, that was helpful and useful, so good job.
You got anything else?
Do I?
Yeah.
I, yes, I, I mean, just to kind of, as a response, we will be doing the town halls, um, as the budgeting process ramps up again, we, we would probably plan to do those again in September, I think is when we did them last year. And so I think that people can start to plan on that every year, that will, and as part of the budgeting process, we'll give them, them, you know, a fresh listen to what their concerns are. And try to see if we can find a way to tie that into what, what we're doing with our budget. So, and the only, only other thing is I wanted to, I think I've told everybody individually, but, um, July tenth to fifteenth, I'll be out, and so, once again, and, and so July eleventh, there is a meeting. And I, and Greg will be in my acting stead while I'm gone.
Come with a lot of issues, you're saying, right?
Lot of hard ones. All right, uh, items to review and discussion, A, development timeline and becoming a development-friendly organization.
I guess that's me again. Yeah, I, I think I've talked with some, with a few of you already, the idea is that, um, we've had some feedback since, in the last year since I've been here, I've heard a, a bit of feedback from council members, from people that are, that are not council members, who are business owners. And even a couple of developers that sometimes our processes aren't the most friendly or easiest for people to work through. And so we did a little bit of our own internal audit on how long it takes us and our process for, uh, development, especially if, as it concerns to, or as it concerns, um, like a residential development. And something that might have to have a public hearing attached to it, um, something that has to go through planning commission. And that we've looked at, at our timelines, and we are one of the longer, if not the longest, um, timeline for a lot of the development processes. And, uh, so we've internally been trying to address that, we've sat down as a, as a staff, we, uh, between engineering, planning and building, and, and fire marshal, and, and making sure that we are being as aggressive as we can. And turning things around that are in the development timeline and, and the development process, so that way we can shorten up our, I mean, we've got, we, by policy, we've got a certain amount of time to turn things around. But we're trying to cut those in half essentially, to try and cut down those timelines. And so I'm asking the council if they will be interested in a potential resolution that would help, um, kind of outline that and solidify that, and also hold the council to a little bit of, of that process, assuming that there aren't any. I mean, the council would always with, always, always hold the right to extend something that needs more process because there's public feedback. If there's, if there's a, a component that, that is not, uh, being agreed upon by the general public, or a good portion of the general public, the council can always say, well, let's, let's give it more time, or have a second reading on a separate date, or anything like that. But if something is, is can, is actually going through the process and there's no pushback, um, I would ask that if we can get the council to help us move that along quicker. We will in turn commit to making sure that we are publicizing these types of developments at an earlier date, so that way the first time people hear about it isn't in an agenda packet that's four days before a council meeting. We want, so if someone's going to have to come with something that has a public hearing amount to it, it's not just the, just meeting the bare minimum of the public hearing, but actually, as we get the application, we, we go ahead and put something on our Facebook, or on our social media, and our website. And say, hey, here's a, here's a project that's coming on the pike, that's going to go through the review process, we want the public to know about it. If there's any feedback or any pushback on this, let us know, so we can start to address it right away. And we don't want to be less transparent, that's not, in, in no way, shape, or form, we want that to happen because we, we want to be more transparent. But, um, we think there's, can be a balance between being more transparent on the front end, and then on the back end, when it comes time for approvals and stuff, get, maybe speeding, speeding up the timeline just a little bit, if that makes any sense.
Go ahead.
I mean, I've been complaining about this three years before you got here, so you two met, it was not you guys, um. I don't, I mean, I don't, I, I'm not here to say anything pushback about the commercial process, and I talked to Encore, and I actually talked to the center owner, and everybody talked about how lovely it was to work with the city. And everybody on the commercial side always tells me working with the city of Belton is wonderful. So as a council person, I don't know if we need to change the commercial process, because I don't hear any feedback. Now, we want to talk about residential, I think that's where we got to focus on, and I think if you want to make a resolution, I think we need to do it after we have, you said you want to do a meeting with builders and developers in August. And I think we need to get their feedback before we go out and create something without their feedback, because I think we got to listen to them. Because like I tell people, we have two builders that build in our community, and we don't have any brand new developments that have started since two thousand and seven. When I'm talking about that, I'm talking about a piece of bare land that someone bought and brought to us and said, here, we want to develop this into residential. Everything that Ward and Salee is doing actually started in two thousand and seven, and they bought that land from the bank and just basically continued it. So I would like for us to get feedback from the builders and developers in August before we start process, but as a city council member, yes, I'm going to jump on board and make our process differently. And hopefully be more friendly and encourage more builders to come to our community.
The only reason I'm asking for this now, instead of waiting until after that process, is, is, is I, I had, I had the thought that maybe it might be the first step in enticing some residential development. To already have the processes sped up when we get to that forum, so that way we can say, hey, here's what we've done to commit to making this a smoother process for you, is there anything else that we're struggling with? And then that way, it's already that we're, we're extending first the, hey, we may not have been the easiest to deal with in the past, but we were trying to.
And I agree with you, Joe, I just want to make sure that we're ready for this, so when these builders come in and, and we have a meeting and say, well, you put this in place, but you don't follow it.
Right.
I mean, I got about five, six, seven builder friends of mine, and I got, I mean, we got a residential guy that puts streets in and don't want to deal with the city of Belton. And putting residential streets in because we're, they say that we're paying, now, again, Greg wasn't here, nobody else, nobody was here, so they haven't experienced us. But how do we get them to experience us is what I'm trying to get to, and, and us putting something in place to show that we're making an effort to make it easier to deal with the Belton. Again, I don't want to take safety out, I just think we got to, our process has to be looked at differently and sped, sped up somehow.
We don't want to be, uh, uh, you know, irresponsible with this, and just, uh, we, we, by looking around, we want to be competitive, if that makes any sense. If someone's going to, is looking to do a development, and they've, you know, the next step, and they're looking at a few communities. step and they're looking at a few communities, we don't want us to be at the bottom of that list just because our processes take the longest, and so, um, we think that we can be competitive with it, with our neighboring communities on these timelines. We're not trying to get so sped up that we're not being responsible in giving due diligence in the review process by any means, um, and we, we just, we're just trying to be responsive.
Right. I just, I mean, other communities can do it in three days and it takes us sometimes twenty-eight days to get a permit processed, and I, I experienced it myself. I mean, I've been through a couple of different things here in, in the last couple of years with the city, so I've experienced it, and I, I know where it needs to change, and we've talked about it, and I think that's part of the change, and I think we need to, that's where we gotta look at is...
Anybody else?
I just want to make sure we have enough support for this before we put a whole, put much work into doing a resolution on this, if, if it's not gonna be met with, you know, not that I'm asking for a yes vote, I just want to make sure that there's that, at least the open mind and, and the willingness to go down this path.
I mean, I understand exactly what you're saying and exactly what he's saying, you know, try to entice them and then, but why do it if we're not gonna change, so, you know, I'd be all right with doing it now and then looking at it after we have the meeting in August, I mean, I'm okay with that.
Maybe there, there'll be other ideas that they'll, that they'll want us to...
We can always change it again.
We can always modify it after August, too, and just say, hey, this is what we went with, and then when we got feedback, we're gonna modify based on what they said, we're gonna add a couple of things and...
Sure. Yeah, I'm okay with that.
And we, and we gotta, we gotta balance it, right? I mean, we want to be development-friendly, we also want to be, make sure we're looking out for the interests of the community and the residents, and, and so we don't want to go too far in the other direction, but we want to make sure that, that we at least, I think we're too far in one direction and not, not...
Again, I, I'm not here to sit there and say builders should get carte blanche whatever they want, I'm not saying that, I just think our process needs to be sped up and make sure that we still keep what I call safety measures in order to make sure we're doing the right thing for the consumer also.
I agree.
Everybody okay with that?
Okay, thank you.
B, Markey Business Park.
Yep, as I think you all are aware, we, the city does own a hundred and twelve acres at the west end of Markey Road, um, which is the Markey Business Park. Um, the city has been marketing that, um, quite a bit over the last several years. Um, a concept plan was, uh, developed in two thousand and sixteen with a preferred option that included a mix of flex industrial manufacturing and wholesale building sites. Um, it's currently zoned business park restricted, which does allow office and light industrial uses. However, we have had limited interest in the site, um, and with the strong growth rate in the community and the need for a wide range of uses and facilities, uh, we just are asking if council has any thoughts, if we need to revisit the Markey Business Park and, and if there's any other ideas or uses that could be entertained at that location.
Go ahead.
Can we wait twelve months and let the comprehensive plan give us some ideas?
Yes, we can, we can certainly do that.
That was my thought.
I was here in two thousand when we started, we got all that land and, um, we're supposed to put roads in to encourage growth and development back there, and you can tell that never happened. The only thing I would ever add on to that is trying to figure out how we can improve, because that road was supposed to connect, I believe, all the way out to Prospect and, um, and go over there, because I think we need to have some type of a, an entrance into that off of Prospect or fifty-eight or one fifty, where people aren't driving down North Scott, and my thoughts. But how do we improve Prospect on the Kansas, Kansas City side if we do something? That's the problem we run into, but we do have a hundred and fifty-fifth, I think, is our property also, is it not?
Yes, it is, half of it is technically.
Half of it, so, half will be good and, it's like the other a hundred and fifty-fifth street, half's good, the other half's not. Now, I just, um, we were back in two thousand, was gonna actually build a road back there to encourage it and put water lines and all that other stuff, and we just never did it, ran out of money. But I think it'd be a great, I mean, it'd be nice if we could encourage maybe smaller, um, business park or, or anything like that, too. I mean, I always use Green Valley as an example, off the highway there, they got a lot of fifteen to fifty thousand square foot buildings that small businesses can go into and operate out of, which, again, they produce income and they have jobs.
All right. Item C, neighborhood noise complaints.
This evening I was asked to explain noise, uh, neighborhood noise complaints. Uh, there's some common misconceptions that I think I may be able to clear up tonight about the prosecution of municipal ordinances for peace disturbances and noise complaints. Peace disturbances and/or noise complaints are not violations that police officers can sign and issue themselves. We need a complainant. In fact, the complainant needs to be able to testify in court that the noise did not allow me to enjoy the peace of my residence, and this is a common law standard that is practiced throughout the nation. As a result, a citizen who's also known as a complainant must be willing to prosecute the neighbor, uh, who's often the offender, and in these types of instances, it is common that the citizen will refuse to, um, prosecute and ask the police to go over and contact the neighbor to try and give voluntary compliance. Most of this is due to a fear of retaliation or ruining a neighborhood relationship with their neighbor or many other reasons. And so officers will go over and speak to the offending neighbor to see if they can gain this voluntary compliance. This practice seldom works and often results in police officers going repeatedly back to the same neighborhood disputes and, uh, neighbors can't work these things out. And so, um, I have some statistics, I think you might, uh, might illustrate this tonight, is that, uh, the Belton Police Department responded to a hundred and sixty-seven calls for service with only four citizens willing to be a complainant in regards to noise complaints in two thousand and twenty-one. In two thousand and twenty-two, there were a hundred and twenty-five calls for service with only two citizens willing to be complainants in regards to noise complaints. To date this year, the police department has responded to ninety-five calls for service with only six complainants regarding noise that wanted to be complainants against neighbors and recently. According to our statute, our, I'm sorry, our municipal ordinances for the city of Belton, which is in line with a lot of other cities, um, noise is under section fourteen one twenty-eight. A noise means any sound which annoys or disturbs humans or which causes or tends to cause an inversion, psychological or physiological effect on humans. A noise disturbance means any sound which, number one, endangers the safe, safety or health of humans or animals, two, annoys or disturbs a reasonable person of, uh, normal sensitivities or endangers or injures personal or real property. And so we often, when we're dealing with noise disturbances or complaints, we're often looking at the real boundary lines, which is an imaginary, a line along the ground that, and vertically extends, that separates a, uh, real property from one owner to the next, and so noise disturbances are something that go over that, that, uh, real property boundary. One of the ordinances that we typically see is, uh, section fourteen one twenty-nine under noise disturbances prohibited, uh, number A, the creating of any unreasonable loud or disturbing and unnecessary noise within the city is hereby prohibited, and that would be a situation where if a neighbor complained about something coming from another neighbor's house yelling, um, music, and we'll get more in specific, and there's ordinances that actually outline other offenses, that would be something that the police officers would handle or the person could be a complainant on. And then, uh, we have section, uh, fourteen one thirty, specific prohibitions. There's prohibitions against, uh, animals and birds, I think we've discussed that before in city council in regards to animal control issues. Uh, one of the ones that we deal with on occasion is power tools, this typically comes up with construction, whether it's renovating a residence or new construction or, uh, rehabbing, and that, that, there can be no, uh, operating or permitting of mechanically or electrical power saws, drills, sanders, grinders, lawn, uh, or garden tool, paint sprayers or similar devices used outdoors in residential areas between the hours of ten P M. and six A M. And so typically you still only see those, uh, in construction purposes every once in a while, um, we have these situations that arise. Uh, one of the other things that I wanted to, uh, bring to attention was under the same ordinance, and it would be number nine, which is radios, television sets, musical instruments and similar devices operating or playing or permitting the operation of the plane of these device, these, um, devices, is typically how we end up at, um, events in local bars with the doors left open on the back of the door, on the back of the bar, and then that sound emanates into the residential area behind it, and then these areas, that cannot happen between ten P M. and seven A M. So sometimes when we bring or we authorize special events or extended, um, party space outside of these facilities, we will actually put in that special, uh, event that you cannot provide a ban between ten P M. and seven A M., and it's specifically referencing this type of behavior or this type of, uh, uh, thing that we're trying to prohibit. One of the other things that we deal with on, on occasion is section fourteen one thirty-two. Um, this, this one comes to me every Monday, um, is refuse collection by vehicles. A lot of times in commercial areas, you will have trash trucks because they're trying to pick up and they're trying to make pickups on specific days for neighborhoods or areas of the city, they will actually try to get out early and collect in commercial areas, but most cities have ordinances that prohibit that type of be, that type of pickup between eight P M. and seven A M. in the morning, and so a lot of times I will hear the trash truck behind my house, um, that is close to the neighborhood, it only has to be within five hundred feet of a residential area, and they'll make that pickup right at seven o'clock, and that's one of the things that will wake me up if my alarm clock doesn't go on. And so, these are typically some of the things that officers deal on a repeated basis, um, and so I thought I'd provide just a little bit of explanation of what we, what we deal with, but I think by far the statistics, um, kind of speak for themselves. We don't get a lot of complaints, complainants that want to actually go to court, because they're the ones that will actually, uh, help the prosecutor resolve that case. Um, one of the things, I've talked to the municipal prosecutor and he, uh, would like to see complainants make those, um, you know, it's always the fear of police chiefs and city administration or even city officials that we're placing officers in positions where they do not have probable cause or they do not have reasonable suspicion or any type of, um, citation that they can issue when we're going on to somebody else's property and we're accusing them of something and we're getting involved in a neighborhood dispute. A lot of times those things become inflamed, especially when we go back repeatedly over a period of time, and we do go to great lengths to try to talk people into making that next step to be a complainant, to try to avoid those, um, and, you know, almost every police officer in their career will tell you about stories about going back repeatedly to neighborhoods where this happens. Our number one thing is we try to work with citizens, we try to educate them about the ordinances, how they could do, help us, help them, um, but often it starts with them making that first step and willing to sign that complaint and be a complainant.
Go ahead.
Um, do you have any advice or suggestions if someone wants to be a complainant to make it a more likely case, that they'll get some relief?
That's a very good question. I think the one thing that has happened in the last, you know, fifteen, twenty years has been the advent of security video and, you know, recording, um, and those things, we, police officers do record those things, um, off of those devices, they'll email them to the officer, and so that is always really good evidence of that. Uh, if we do go over there and we have a complainant and then we're gonna go next door, uh, we do have body worn camera that also, you know, records that noise from the complainant's house and then walking to, uh, the originator of that, um, at the offender's residence, and so that's always a double stamp when those cases can go to court and the prosecutor really likes that because that is, you know, basically a witness. Um, and then lastly, any witnesses that we can establish that would come forward, a lot of them don't want to come forward for the same reasons, they don't want to be retaliated against, they feel like they gotta live in the neighborhood across from the offender, um, and it's just gonna cause problems, and so, um, we, you know, we hardly ever have instances where, I don't know, if, you know, somebody that's, um, that has been signed up or on a complaint actually retaliates, but it is a large thing that people are afraid of, and sometimes we just can't get them over that hump.
Okay, thank you.
Angela, go ahead.
I would like to say thank you so much for those statistics. I do feel like those were very beneficial, um, in, in helping us kind of see the overall scope of everything. Um, I also feel like hearing, you know, that in years past it was maybe two or three complainants, and now we're halfway through the year and we already have six. I think that sounds like we've been doing some really good P R. and making sure that our citizens understand that if we want, you know, a noise violation to actually be taken to court, that they have to sign that complainant, um, paperwork, so I, I think it sounds like we're doing a good job and heading in a good direction. Thank you.
Go ahead, Rob.
Well, first of all, uh, I, I've lived in, uh, several other cities and, and by a lot of noisy neighbors, and the first thing I do is go and talk to them personally. But every city that I lived in, except this one, uh, has noise numbers, and, uh, it would be so much easier if, like Kansas City, Houston, other areas, the other cities that have, uh, no, hard limits, that you call up anonymously, I mean, I know you have to give your number to the dispatcher and blah, 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 but you, the, the, the police officer shows up, he goes into the middle of the street, the limit's fifty-five after ten P M., he gets fifty-seven, and there it is, there's a ticket. And I, so I'm not, I'm not downplaying citizen-to-citizen, uh, cooperation, because if you can't just go to your neighbor and talk to him and fear, and without fearing for your life or fearing for retaliation, then maybe you're in the wrong neighborhood, but, uh, i- if that is actually the case and what we're coming to, then I think the, uh, hard scientific way to do it is to have a number, and, uh, big cities have numbers and their police officers apparently ca- carry, uh, noise monitors.
Uh, when I was the chief of police in Papillion, Nebraska, their ordinance was specifically directed around, uh, residential, commercial type, uh, development, and there were noise levels that were with that. That ordinance that created that was, um, created back in the late seventies, and it didn't take into effect how residential and commercial butts up next to each other, and so those limits sometimes are unreasonable because you might have a limit of thirty-five or, you know, in a neighborhood, but then it joins to a major arterial street where you have a commercial, uh, strip mall and you have a bought, you have businesses that move in and move out. There's a difference in the type of noise that is associated with a McDonald's as opposed to a Walmart or a bar, a local bar, or in one case in Papillion, a wine bar that had outdoor entertainment, and so those things are very difficult, and the other thing is, is that noise meters by themselves are very expensive. I think the last time I, I looked at purchasing some up there, we purchased, uh, six of them, they were like fifteen hundred dollars apiece, they're just like, um, radar, uh, equipment, they have to be certified every year, just to certify them is like four hundred and fifty dollars, and then we get them mailed back. And the other thing is, is that a lot of times we would have citizens that would have an app that has what the decibel reading was. That's not necessarily a good reading on what the actual decibel is, that's a scientific thing, like you just said, and it takes specific monitoring and you have to be trained on where to set that up, and we would set that up at the real property and to get a successful prosecution in court, we'd have to leave the device in place for over thirty minutes because just a momentary sound that reaches... sound that reaches over the decibel limit of 35, maybe it was a car driving by, it could have been a horn in the neighborhood that was three blocks over. It's very hard to pin down exactly what that sound was that peaked that meter. So we'd have to leave police officers in place, listening and watching the meter to make sure that that's, that was the music that did it. And so, you know, I don't know whether or not the, the way that they handled it was any smarter. I think it's a lot easier for citizens to talk to their neighbors, like you suggested and like we talked tonight, but also to have a noise nuisance because then you're not dealing with decibels, you're dealing with the common law standard, which we follow here, which is the noise doesn't allow me to have peace on my property.
Yeah. Well, I think you, I can tell from what you're saying, you have a good background in noise. So I, I think you could administer a scientific or a number based program. And you're absolutely right. You don't want to, you can get directional noise meters too that filter out the thing from three blocks away. But you will have to stand there more than two minutes, probably 15 minutes anyway, to make sure that the average that you're getting is actually from the house you're trying or the business you're trying to monitor. But, and I know from this, I mean, two years ago, I brought up proposed ordinance for noise for construction sites and it was voted down by the council. So there's not a real, there's not a real want here for hard grade things, but hard numbers. But saying that, I still think that you need to know your neighbor. And in my case, I've had neighbors in Houston who are real, I can't even use the word, but I was always able to get along with them and I was always able to go over there at one o'clock in the morning and say, please turn that down. And they did. So anyway, thanks, thanks for that information.
Anybody else? Item D, short-term rentals.
Staff has received an increase in inquiries regarding the permissive short-term rentals. Currently, our code does not permit tourism houses, which would include short-term rentals. So we only permit hotels and bed and breakfast in certain commercial zoning districts. Several cities in the metro area do allow short-term rentals with varying regulations. Some don't have any regulations and they allow them, and others have more restrictive regulations. So what we're asking for this evening is any feedback from the council on if we should look into allowing short-term rentals and if so, what types of restrictions or regulations we should be looking at as we draft any kind of code amendment related to that.
I guess my question, I haven't looked into this very much with other communities, but do they make it a certain timeline or time that they got to stay like a week at a time or is it a nightly thing also? I know like some Airbnbs you can just, or VRBOs, you can rent it for three days and you're done, but that's typically what I would consider more of a tourist area? Or do we set up a geographical area where it's allowed? I mean, that's my question.
So yeah, there's, there's a lot of different ways of crafting it. So some cities do limit it to certain districts or property sizes. So in Lee Summit, they only allow them in their old town or historic district or on properties that are more than an acre. So you can limit it to districts or neighborhoods. You could also limit the number of licenses that you permit. And that's probably something that would be necessary in this, in our situation, just given our limited housing stock. And we know that there's demand for additional housing. So we definitely don't want to see all of our housing that goes up for sale being bought up by investors for short-term rentals.
Mayor, I, I've stayed in one, Airbnbs and VRBOs, and I really like them and I kind of hate to see us totally rule them out. You just said a good thing there, that special districts or something I think would be something we could look at or should look at or something because I would hate to not have any in Belton because there's some places that would really be good for that. Although I don't like short-term rentals in other senses, but I think if you regulated it to districts and stuff, it would be something we could look at.
How long do you go out to make it a short term? Is that less than a month or is that like, I don't know what a?
So the way that our code is written is anything less than 31 days.
31 days, okay.
Which that is also from the revised statutes of Missouri as well. That is what a transient guest, once you go past.
So someone could actually do a two-month rental if they're here for a construction job and stay two months and that's legal?
Yes.
Yeah, you could rent an apartment for a month and a half or two months and not fall into this category.
Or if they just did 31 days, they're fine, right? Or 32 days?
Yeah.
I'm for it. I think maybe start it out in Old Town Belton, see how it goes. I've, I've seen it fix up other neighborhoods, so I think it has a plus that it could be. You never go to Airbnb and it's the worst house on the block, it's usually the best. So, and once that happens, other people are going to start fixing up their houses. So I think it's a good benefit that could help us.
Go ahead, Angela.
I really do like the idea of us looking into it more and definitely getting an idea of what other towns are sized and even places like Lee Summit that are kind of the direction we want to go as far as tourism, what they do, and kind of get all that information together to be able to decide what we feel is best for us. So instead of reinventing the wheel, you know, look at what other people are doing. I know that Airbnb sent us some information as well. So, you know, looking into all of that to form our new policy, I think sounds like a great idea.
Matt, I think your concern about the lack of available housing stock in Belton is a pretty big one. I also, in my mind, I have a Venn diagram of short-term rentals, our rental inspection program we've been working on, and then the tiers that the hotel motels go through. There's going to be some overlap in terms of safety, both like crime related and safety of the housing stock. Chris, you're not as cheap as I am. I've stayed in some pretty sketch Airbnbs. You know, so we don't really want to encourage that kind of commercial activity in our neighborhoods. I have some hesitations and recently the shooting spree at Airbnb in Kansas City, Missouri, just I think this last weekend, has brought up a lot of concerns in Kansas City, which obviously has a bunch of these, and they've been trying to get a handle on regulations around them and they've really struggled. So I don't really want to open up the door to that without a really thoughtful set of regulations.
I know that a national company sent each one of us an email today.
Right.
Knowing that this was on the agenda and they wanted to talk about it. So I will forward that to you two and let you two deal with them and we can stay, stay out of it. Go ahead.
I mean, I'd be in favor of what you said earlier, like a district like Old Town and anything more than one acre because it keeps you out of the subdivisions per se. And my second question is, have we ever get on VRBO to make sure we don't already have them? We do have them?
I am currently on Airbnb and you do have one active right now.
Okay.
That we know of. That's not being.
I think the biggest thing, Matt, is just protecting the people, homeowners in subdivisions and stuff. If you're out on like an acre, like you said, or better, that would be something I could see we could be acceptable. But I want to protect people that buy homes in subdivisions and such, that's.
I think that'd be worth trying, especially like if you did a geographical area and allowed people to try it in that area, but.
Going on Allison's comment, I am actually pretty cheap, my wife is not.
I figured you're cheap like me. May I ask a question? You said that you're getting increased questions and interest. What kind of numbers are we talking about?
Probably back, it was back in the springtime when Kansas City adopted more restrictive regulations. So I think there are a lot of operators who are looking to get out of Kansas City because of the regulations. So they're looking at suburban communities where there aren't any regulations or they may be more relaxed.
That's what I would hate for them, just to flood into our city and take up all our houses.
There was probably about a month there where it was almost a daily inquiry. It slowed, slowed down quite a bit, so we're probably maybe one every week or so now.
Any repeating, you know what I mean? Like is there a lot of overlap, the same folks reaching out or just like for a month you got maybe 30 inquiries and they were all different?
They were all different.
Okay, thank you.
And some of them may be people who already live here and some may be people who were looking at real estate in the city to.
But you said we could limit them too? So we can say we can start with?
Yeah, there are some cities, so St. Charles, they did put a cap on the number of licenses that they would issue based on the percentage of housing. So they said they wouldn't allow any more than half a percent of their housing units to be used for short-term rentals.
But if you did like a territory, let's say we say Old Town Belton, since that's the only territory I think we have, I mean, you could say not more than 10% of the houses in Old Town could be used as an Airbnb or short-term rentals.
Or some cities like Independence say no more than one house a block.
Okay.
So you could limit it in that fashion as well. That becomes a little bit more difficult because obviously you'd have to monitor that and make sure, you're reviewing every license to make sure it fits those geographic.
You say one house per block?
Yes.
So depending which direction you go?
So I don't know exactly how their ordinance is written, if it's just the rectangular block, it's just if it's in that block or how they define their blocks.
Gotcha.
Well, how many plots in Old Town Belton are one acre or more?
No, it's either a geographical area or places that have one acre or more. There's an or in there.
Okay. Because I, I looked at Kansas Cities and they, first of all, you can print it out, you can rent your house out no more than 90 days out of the, out of the year and the owner has to be in it the rest of the time. So you're not going to have, if we adopted something like Kansas City, the owner has to be there three-fourths of the year. And they also had things that there has to be somebody on call within 20 miles or something, the owner usually, that can come and solve differences or break up the gunfight or whatever it is.
That might bring another, another component to this that we might want to consider is as we have special events that are popular or become more popular or maybe hopefully we have more of them, there may, we may want to give an exception for folks to do it two weeks or three weeks out of the year. You know what I'm saying? So that way they, you know, if someone lives here and they just want to make a few bucks off of a hot weekend, that's not, and they don't want to be here, then I don't think we should be restricting that necessarily because that's not the nature of us wanting to restrict this, is to protect our housing stock, not to limit the property owners and their ability to utilize their property, so to speak.
Also, just to kind of piggyback off what council member Powell said, Kansas City does have kind of a two-track sort of system when it comes to their Airbnbs. One track is the owner occupied, which is what council member Powell stated, which, you know, I don't think it even requires a special use permit or anything.
Right.
As long as you are in your house for, you know, 270 some odd days. But then they do have a separate track for the investor-owned sort of Airbnb market, which is something that from a land use and nuisance standpoint in all of our other communities, those are, the investor-owned ones are the ones where we see most of the issues.
Yeah.
Or at least we get most of the complaints.
So if they're not permissible at this point and we already have one listed, do we report that to Airbnb and they say that's not allowed where you live and they take them offline or do, you know what I mean? Do we have to follow up? Because now that the conversation's happening, people are going to try to get them online.
So there are two routes that we've dealt with this with Airbnb is you can send Airbnb a letter saying that this needs to be removed from the site. They will do it sometimes, sometimes they also will just ignore you. The alternative is you begin the zoning violation process with them, with the property owner, which would include, you know, a 10-day notice that they have to do that. If they don't, then it's a $500 fine, so on and so forth. I will say enforcement of these ordinances is extremely difficult. But, you know, Airbnb is typically a willing participant when it comes to the collection of taxes because if you are renting out your house for less than 30 days, then that is a transient guest, which then does make it subject to our sales taxes and also potentially your hotel motel thing. But I would have to take a look at that ordinance.
And we, and we have used code enforcement before when we have been, have had one reported to us and had record of it. So you generally have to book a reservation or try to get more information to find the exact address, but we did have some neighboring property owners provide us with that information to be able to get that one shut down through the code enforcement process.
Okay, thanks.
All right, hearing none. Motion to enter executive session to discuss matters pertaining to the leasing, purchase or sell of real estate according to Missouri State Statute 610.021.2. At the record, be closed and the meeting adjourned from there.
Present.
Second.
We have a motion and a second.
Mayor Larkin?
Yes.
Councilmember Go, Goff?
Aye.
Councilmember Richardson?
Aye.
Councilmember Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Lawson?
Aye.
Councilmember Powell?
Yes.
Councilmember Kraft?
Aye.
Motion carries.